With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got 6:35 for veterans. Hey Joe, you want to come up and we'll just do yours and we'll move on from there?
Joe Shalou, 140 School Street. Just following up from the last meeting to see if there's been any updates. I know you had said at the last meeting that you were trying to coordinate with the attorney, Mr. Martin and Mr. Briggs to discuss their interpretation of the cease and desist. And he was out on leave or vacation or whatever.
He was on leave.
So I didn't know if there's been any status update or any change because I have not received anything yet from anyone.
I asked Mr. Martin earlier today and he was out with UMass for some workshop or something like that.
He has his annual school that he just got done with.
He just got done with it. So that's shot this weekend. So I mean, Mr. Martin will make an appointment so we can visit with him. And I know it's been four weeks since you asked.
Well, it's been since the middle of September since I submitted the petition.
Well, I'm just talking since you asked here.
Well, yeah.
That's what I meant by that, the four weeks here.
Can I suggest something?
Sure.
This has been going on a little while. And I know it's tough to get everybody together. Is there something that we could just have you write the questions that you want answered? Directly write out the questions?
Well, that's what the petition was.
Oh, hang on. Directly write out the questions and then Chris can send them to the attorney?
We already sent the petition to the attorney.
Just wait on the answers and we'll just go from there? Because it seemed like that may be a quicker process to get all the answers based on trying to get everybody together at the same time here.
Do you have to request a special counsel to come in and address us an executive session again and then we'll just pinpoint them and say, "Give us the explanation."
It's not executive session material.
Oh.
Right, and I think it's just you want certain questions asked or answered. So I think if we just have the attorney, the town council just answer those questions that he's asked and forward him back the answers. I think that'd be the easiest than trying to get, you know, people together over and over again.
I mean, because I'm continuing to get questions, you know, from the group that, you know, I come every select board meeting to represent the 20 people that were on the original petition, but they're still asking, especially when there's heavy activity out there, you know, what's going on and, you know, why aren't we getting answers to the questions we ask? One way or another, just an answer of what is covered by the...
Right, and I know that the previous meetings, which was discussed, try to have yourself, the attorney, and Mr. Martin together along with the code enforcement officer. The code enforcement officer, maybe we can just look at the questions being directly answered and you'll be getting a reply from the town, which will be from the attorney. Would that make it easier? They're trying to get like everybody together at the same time here. I know the attorney's busy and...
And I want to be careful about this because I don't want to jeopardize the, you know, town's position in land court or anything with this issue. So I mean, I'm trying not to push too hard. I don't want to go to, you know, the investigative IT teams or any of that stuff and start... You know, the two years of information that I've given you guys.
I don't...
You know, I don't, yes, but I also, like I said, this is just something that, you know, I just want to answer to, what the interpretation is.
Right, and I think that's fair as I just mentioned, as Chris can follow up the attorney, the direct questions and have that answered for you. All right, I don't...
And just so you'll know, I mean, there'll probably be something else coming in because Mr. Poultrie, in fact, called me and left a message, I think it was Friday or Thursday or one of the days, he was up at his property and he was hearing ricochets going by while he was working and he called 911. I don't know if you heard about that, but...
We did see it.
There'll probably be some other safety-related complaints coming in. I'm waiting for the leaves to come off to try to get up there.
Well, again, anything in the future, I think we spoke about it before, to file complaint. Chris will follow up on the questions that you presented. We'll get those answered, anything in the future.
That just made it a little more urgent in my mind when he started hearing, you know, ricochet rounds when he's up there working in his tree lot, so...
Understood.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the Veterans Memorial Committee. Hey, I see Jason and somebody I don't recognize.
Jim Soule, 51 Con Street, North Hampton.
Jason Richard, 17 Colton Drive.
We're here to give an update on the project and answer any questions you have. We've been plugging away at fundraising, doing more grant research, raising as much money as we can. Currently working with a landscape architect out of the North Hampton area to wrap up the construction documents, have a stamp set to go before the planning board. Expected groundbreaking, everything goes to plan, is around spring. Biggest challenge we're still facing is finding a contractor to take on the project, but we have a few promising leads. So until then, we're just going to keep having some fundraisers and plugging away the drawings.
How close you guys to your goal? Have you reached it yet?
We're a little short of the number we originally set out to achieve. No matter what we raise, by the time construction starts to go tailor the project to fit our budget. Focus is on the honor roll in that area of the park, but everything else we can...
Were fundraisers, fundraisers been going good?
Today we've raised $170,000.
That's awesome.
Thirty-five thousand of that was in grants, which we've already spent on creating some new bronze plaques to replace the old ones. And we also got the bronze lettering and the service plaques with that money.
You had those for a little while, right? Because those are the ones we saw there about a year or so ago.
And that was funded through a state grant that we had to use within a certain time.
Yeah, those are nice, very nice.
Jason, can you just explain the process if someone wants to get their name on one of the plaques? We've been getting phone calls here and a lot of people are confused as to the exact process that they need to go through.
Sure, they can either get a copy of an application from our website, which is grameyveteransmemorial.org, or they can go see Kathy Keller-Weeden, the town clerk, and she has applications right there and she fills out her part in the office. Do they have to bring a DD 214 or... A copy of a DD 214 with the application, yes.
Thank you. We have been getting some questions and people are confused.
I can get something else out there, an informational sheet.
If you want, can you just put something together and we get it out on our website, our webpage in that way?
Absolutely.
You know, people can go out there and reference yours.
The plans are right there.
In the box? I don't want to see them.
You'll be seeing them when I'll be...
That's just detailed design, that's not the full range, you're right.
Correct, they're like 85, 90%.
Yeah, it's detailed design stage.
A pricing set. We put a bunch of feelers out there to see if we can get some cost estimates from contractors.
Is it going to be a lot of stonework, I understand?
Yes, the main feature of the park is the memorial wall that houses the bronze plaques. And the intent is, from the outside, it looks like a regional New England stone wall. So from the street, that's what you'll see, but the inside, there's more fieldstone, but some bluestone slabbed as well.
Because I know the owner of Chickaby Mason.
That would be helpful.
Writing myself a note now.
We have many, many hundreds of square feet of stone veneer we need.
Okay, well, let me talk to him and see what kind of rate for a nonprofit org I can get. Okay, I can get ahold of Jason, too.
The projected groundbreaking. April, May?
Spring.
Well...
Spring.
Well, you know, it just keeps getting put back and back and back and people... Some people are getting concerned. Is it really ever going to happen? They're getting frustrated and we understand their frustration, wholeheartedly. We've been working on this project for five years. All of it's volunteer-based, everybody from the friends of Gramey Veterans to us. We've all been doing all the fundraisers year after year. And it's not easy on us and Jim, who made all those plans, that would normally cost us $20,000 to $25,000. So we're also, we're at the pace of volunteers. But it is... Any idea, April, May? We're closer than we've ever been before. And we had originally thought to do the groundbreaking on this Veterans Day, but it would be only ceremonial. Right after we put the shovel on the ground and we'd just sit. So I'd rather do a real groundbreaking with equipment there and we're ready to start.
The biggest challenge we face right now is finding the contractor to take on the project.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, if I get all the Chickaby Mason, they can make deals with contractors. Because I know them, they've done a lot. And if you go to my house, all you do is see is stone.
I've reached out to probably half a dozen, a dozen.
Did you go to Chickaby Mason?
I have a contact, a Mason supply, I've just been reaching out to local contractor for this.
Okay, because if you go, we try the other route. Because if he discounts his product, it goes to the laborers, maybe we can get a discount that way. And you are a nonprofit write-off for donation, so that maybe the contractors, we can get them to do something that way. So I'll reach out to them and I'll get back to both of you on that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. No problem.
Mr. Jim?
Yeah?
I'm here representing the Parks Department.
Oh, and you want to be involved?
Well, our Parks Committee is supposed to be here. They're here, I'm sure. Just to let you know that the Parks Department is 100% behind us. To also let you know that the Veterans Committee has kept us abreast of everything that's going on along the way, it's been great. And we have no problems, we support it 100%. Thank you.
And Jim, those plans that are right there, the just-in-the-detail design stage, I assume you gave them to the town to use or did you want them back?
Those are yours to keep.
Because I was going to bring them to Chickaby Mason to show them the magnitude of the project.
Feel free, yeah.
Okay, I just want to get permission before... Can I go through the Parks Committee first?
No. Those are the property of the planning board where they're meeting on the floor. I can send you a file.
That's fine, that's fine. Because they might want to know the amount of blocks, the kind of blocks and stuff like that, then reach out to the appropriate contractor they use that buys their blocks. Because it's to their advantage to buy their blocks if we can get a discount for you guys.
Do you have another set to Jay, Richard?
Yeah, if you want a full-size set, I can get you one.
Okay, that'd probably be easy, get a full-size set, we won't mess with that. You just get it to Jason and Jason can get it to me easy enough. He can give me a call and stuff, then I'll go over there and show them what the plan is and see what they'll do on product, as well as who would they recommend using their products, who's the best laborers, and then find out what the cost is from there. Maybe we can do something. All we can do is ask.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
If you don't ask, they can't say no. Right? Okay.
Sorry, you probably have someone from your committee going there and seeing them.
Yeah, let me make initial contact and then I'll get out of it with the plans and then you guys work it back. Because I don't want to get, I got way too much to do than get in the middle of the project that's already going by you guys.
Yeah, but if you have a contact, feel free to copy me on that.
Yeah, I do know the owner. I can get ahold of Mark, no problem. I will take care of that, put it on my clipboard here. Anything else?
It's all right, dude.
And your Parks Committee's all behind it, so it's just a matter of getting the final plans before you go off a bid. Same way I weigh you out the water project, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
You go home and watch the football, Pete.
Yeah, I'm going to try and beat you. We're going to make it, we're going to make it. Mr. Martin, anything in particular first? You want to do correspondence and then just go right down?
If you want.
Yeah, all right, I allow him because he want to make points on different stuff, so... Hey, let's do the correspondence next. Anybody got any questions on any of the correspondence?
Well, let's discuss an email that we got in, even though it relates to number five on the new business. There really is correspondence that relates to it. Now, I got an email from the Springfield Materials Recycling Facility Advisory Board regarding the upcoming rates that it's going to cost us per ton to have our recyclables only processed at the Springfield MRF. And the issue is, is the processing fees paid per ton to be paid to the operator, starting for July 2020 to June 2021 is $145 a ton. July 21 to June of '22, $148.63. July 22 to June of '23, $152.34. Basically, it's a three-year contract with up to four three-year extension options. If we switch to dual stream, because we have single stream, you can go a five-year contract with two five-year potential extensions. July 20 to June of '21 would be $93.50. July of '21 to June of '22 would be $95.84. July 22 to June of '23, $98.23. July of '23 to June of '24, $100.69. And June of '24 to June of '25, $103.21. We currently pay to dispose of our trash at the Casella facility in Holyoke. We pay $77.50 a ton.
And that's trash, right?
That's trash. So the cost of conducting a curbside service is going to go up dramatically. Just so the board knows.
So we currently pay $77.50 a ton and for...
Recyclables is free.
Right, but I'm just looking at here, so for, I guess it'd be fiscal year '21, it's going to go up to $145?
It's going to be 100, from zero to 145 for recyclables.
Wow.
Because we currently, we pay zero for processing recyclables at that facility.
How much recyclables do we get in proportion to the regular trash?
I don't have that off the top of my head. If you want, I can...
10%, 50% or something like that?
We do about 100 tons a month in trash. I want to say we're probably equal or a little bit more for recyclables, yeah.
So it's all 50/50 now?
Yeah.
A lot of people, they're focused on recycling.
Well, that was the goal, was to get everything recyclable and get your solid waste down because the landfills are closing.
If I'm reading this chart correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to pay a lot more to give them recyclables than we'd ever get a revenue share back.
Right now, we get nothing.
Right.
And the way this is geared, we still won't get anything for our recyclables.
Okay, because it doesn't look like much down here for revenue share.
Nope.
If we were to, not recyclable, just the trash, the cost would go down, but would that affect us in any of the current things we have, whether it's green communities or anything like that?
I don't think so.
I don't know, I'm just asking.
I don't think it would affect green communities because this is run through another section of DEP.
Okay, DEP, not DOE.
Right, this is a DEP, this is all run through DEP.
That's right, I got a letter here from Mike Gorski that signed it, so that's DEP, yeah. Mike Gorski, yeah.
Well, it may not affect...
It might affect something else, I don't know.
Things like that, but it's definitely going to affect, if we stop recycling, all recycling streams, it's going to affect public opinion.
Oh, I agree, it's going to affect the public opinion.
Negatively.
But then if you look at the price of what they're charging to pick up recyclables versus trash...
No, I understand that, this is ridiculous.
Well, it's got to be pointing they have nowhere to put the recyclables anymore.
Yeah, nobody wants it.
Right, nobody wants them.
So it's going to be converted to trash probably anyways. And even if it's inspected, they pick up recyclables, they're saying right now, only 9% of the delivered recyclables are actually kept because they're dirty, mixed, a little like that.
One of my concerns is, if you look at the bottom of the first page regarding glass, upon approval by the Commonwealth, community must demonstrate alternative disposal options for glass. You don't want to be...
Recycling stream.
Yeah, that first page you said, the unit?
Yep.
Yeah.
Or second page, I'm sorry.
That has the, right up the graph.
Second page at the very bottom.
Yeah, we have a little graph for recycling.
Loads substantially free of glass should receive a credit of $5 per ton.
So I don't know, we're going to send our glass, too?
You've got to imagine that the town office is going to serve enforcing that it's got to be done, then there's going to be avenues to do it.
Another point, they've turned around and dictated to towns and towns just have to do it.
You have to eat it.
Because I have no idea where else you should throw your glass into. The only thing I know that they do, is a lot of places, they'll crush it up into powder and put it into road material. A lot of places are starting to do that now.
I know there's a gas station in South Andy Falls, he's got a dumpster out there, it'll take any and all metal. Just go dump it and dump it and then he brings it down.
Well, if he gets a glass one, we'll take all our glass and dump it in his dumpster.
Well, something to research. Because it's going to happen.
Well, the only other thing we'd have is to probably put a box somewheres and people bring their glass there and we find a place to dump.
And hope it would be clean.
It ain't going to be clean, you know that as well as I know that. That's probably part of the reason why they don't want glass, because people don't clean it.
Well, unfortunately, it's going to happen, if people aren't going to just can throw all the trash.
Well, it'll be on the sides of the roads, or it'll be on the sides of the roads.
But I just think people are putting away their trash, it's going to be easier for them to do that then.
Of course it is.
Unfortunately.
You know, you spent, you spent, God, what, 30 years trying to train people to recycle? And now you're turning around and saying, "We don't want you to recycle."
Well, basically, you can't afford to recycle. And it comes down to what the price...
You know, and the big problem is, is when a town looks at it, it's cheaper to throw it away than to recycle. If I'm only paying $78 versus $145, you know, that's half the cost, almost.
And I think unfortunately, a lot of people, a lot of towns and cities are going to look at that.
I agree.
Because it comes down to a, you know, a price tag.
Yep.
As you said, we're, you know, right now, we're almost like a 50/50 split.
Lot of money involved in this, just so the board knows.
Do you think this increase is going to require a tax hike or are we going to be able to do something? I know it's almost doubling, that's why I'm asking.
I have no idea at this point.
Was what, 3% of the tax rate was for disposal of trash when we went up?
It was around, when we was implemented, it was like 63 cents on a thousand.
63 cents on a thousand, okay.
But don't forget, we reduced it by 30 grand, too, from the original, so...
No, I'm just trying to figure, if we got to pay this extra money, where's it going to come from?
Other town budgets. For lack of a better word, other town budgets.
I don't see, I don't see the town voting from an override to fund it or not, so...
No, I don't either. That's why I'm just trying to figure it out ahead of time. Where are we going to pay it from?
Well, as Chris just said, you only have so much revenue coming in and that's where it's got to be paid out.
Yeah, I mean, mostly the schools, since they got 67% of the money.
The issue will be, you know, we just signed a five-year contract with waste management for curbside collection. When it comes out, five years, depending what this stuff is doing. You may get out.
Yeah.
Because you can't afford it.
I'm kind of sad that we didn't know this before.
Yep.
I think that's why they were pushing their contract so much.
Well, now, the issue is, is they've been in negotiations for...
Months.
I think six or seven months, trying to get this through. And every time you pushed, oh, the negotiations are confidential, confidential, confidential. Now we're at the point now where people have to get their budgets together for next year. This is how they released it. It doesn't really give you a lot of time to turn around and seek out alternatives. Just to keep the board informed, that's all I'm trying to do. You know, we may be able to squeak by at least two, maybe three years, but then at that point, it's going to start, maybe start requiring a subsidy. Either that, or we get rid of the enterprise fund and have it just become part of a town department. And that way, it is what it is. And the revenues that are generated go into the revenue stream and...
Right, we're going to have to look at some options, see what's up the best.
And then the bulky waste stuff, you know, you don't have to go through the roof with it. You know, I have a concern because on this last round of bulky waste, we collected 37 mattresses at 25 bucks a pop to get rid of. $1,000.
Mattress is always a big item, why throw them off to the side because they'll fill with dumpster up so quick?
But the issue is, it's $25 to disposal. You know, $1,000 for that one day. So...
Right, and we need to look at whatever costs a town to dispose of a mattress and make sure that's what we charge, so we're kind of just breaking even on it. And we're not really breaking even because we're paying town employees to be out there, so that is actually costing the town, that's some of the money that...
That's what I'm saying, is, you know, as this happens, people are going to start bringing more to bulky waste day in.
Because they can't get rid of their...
And that's, and it gets to myself being there this time around, too, and talking with Dave a little bit about it, really streamlining a certain line item, what's allowed, what's not allowed, and that we stick to it. I mean, it's tough sometimes when people bring a bunch of all this different stuff and you kind of got to, you know, figure out what it is and what it's not, you know, and so it's definitely some things that, when this comes around again, to start looking at it.
Well, I want to start looking at it now because you can't get rid of propane cylinders now.
Right. You know... Propane cylinders, well, you can, but we can't because Dave's not set up for that, to remove that.
We're not going to cut them up either.
Right, that's what I said, he's not equipped for that and also the...
The issue with freon, and the freon.
And fluorescent lights as well.
Well, if they accidentally get dropped, you can, but...
Well, what happened was that, if that can happen, then that whole area becomes contaminated.
Unless it's in a dumpster, then, you know, it just...
Contaminated and all that stuff. So what happens to that, we'll be, I definitely know, some things you got to take off the list around there.
Yep, but I really want to start looking at it now. Yep, but I really wanna start looking at it now, so that we can...
I think so, yeah. When I said later, I didn't mean, too far down the road, I mean, sooner or later, but...
Okay, well, like I said, I just wanted to touch base, cause that was really correspondence, not good news, but...
It's for the buzzkill.
Hey, anytime, I'm good at that.
Under correspondence, I did read whether forestry under DCR has denied the Bow and Gun Club their cutting.
They're cutting.
The state forester, yes, denied the proposed forest cutting plan for the Grammy Bow and Gun Club, yes.
So what would be their next reaction, since they went to the conservation committee, and the conservation committee didn't address it in the amount of time they had, ten days or something, they said?
I was under the impression that Bill Sheehan did speak to the state forester...
Oh, okay.
...within that ten-day period, but, you know, to lodge the concerns of the, of the conservation, and, but it didn't matter, because he rejected it.
Right, but in our last meeting, it stated that the Bow and Gun Club waited until the day after the last conservation meeting to submit it, and they had ten days to review it, and it wasn't a conservation meeting.
But, but, the forest cutting plan, just like the board of selectmen, it's emailed to them, they can, as members, contact the state forester and make their comments, as individual members, probably can't do it as a...
Corps.
As a, as a, an official board action, where each of the members could call and talk to them, just like you guys get the emails from Kathy, you know, whenever there's anything important, we forward it out to you guys, you know? So when they say that they didn't have time to respond, I find that to be a cop-out, I'm sorry, I'll say it that way, it's a cop-out.
Yeah. Particularly since they're only meeting once a month, no?
Every three weeks.
Every three weeks.
So...
Is there anything by them meeting once every three weeks that's gonna put the town in jeopardy of requirements the town has to do within a certain period of time?
No, but I think the issue would be, is if the planning board is reviewing something and it requires a conservation comment, if they're, I think you give them, what, thirty days?
Thirty-five.
But just like, just like, just like...
No, I understand that, but...
I'm sure that if we, if they need to meet, they'll meet on a topic or subject.
But I'm just saying, but, that could...
Like what?
That could, and that's what I'm saying, he asks, is there anything?
Yeah, it's possible, yeah.
Potential.
I'm just trying to look out ahead of problems as possible, could happen, so we're gonna discuss it.
I think more you're talking about, Jay, and, I mean, there's probably timeframes and stuff like that, where, you know, someone submits something and has a certain amount of time to reveal it.
Right, each department has thirty-five days, it's considered, they have no objection to the project.
So, that would be the only concern I would have, something of that nature.
I didn't know if there was anything else in the town that, cause there's a lot of contracts and stuff in the town, depending on other things that I don't know everyone.
No, they'd have to look at that, conservation, they'd have to look at that, make sure nothing would jeopardize the timeline.
Mm-hmm. Cause like, as I say, after thirty-five days, the department doesn't have any objection.
Right.
Anything else in concert, or correspondence, anybody?
Well, you're gonna give, do you want me to report on anything, saying it's under town administrator, or what? Cause I do have an email that I received from Keith Lincoln, you got it too, Jay, came in on Friday.
Yeah, that's the one that...
Basically, they've sent the project for peer review to Time Bond, that the board had approved, allowing that to occur, and, at this time, the construction estimate by Chapel, the way I understand this, is one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand to go from the town line to fifty-four West State Street.
That's because of the stuff that South had, they added on, fortunately.
And the issue is, is the peer review could result in changes either up or down.
Yep.
And, we have to wait until they do their thing before we...
Right, that's why...
But I'm just letting the board know.
I consider that still in the detailed design, but it's not gonna just...
But, I'm...
You're just letting it ring?
I'm just informing the board of the process, and...
That's what, some correct, that's what the town of South Valley's gonna charge the town of Grammy.
No, that's what the projected construction cost is, to add on, to put the line, just put the line in the, in the ground.
And that's going from the line to...
About fifty-four West State Street.
So where we've been talking about?
Little Italy.
Little Italy, yeah, okay.
So, okay.
Wow.
Just for the board's information, is when we read about the police department going up to the Grammy Bow and Gun Club because of a shooting event, and somebody claiming that bullets were whizzing past them while they're on their property, I asked the building inspector to go up and look at the site. Do you want me to read his email to me, or did his board want me not to?
Go ahead and read it for them.
Okay, well, it isn't public, cause it's only come to me so far, but, "Chris, I went to the Grammy Bow and Gun Club today, Monday, ten, twenty-one, nineteen, as a follow-up to the police report of shooting at the club. There is no timeline given in the police report, so I cannot attest to the shooting being within proper shooting times. If it were light enough for an abutter to be in the woods, chances are it was within appropriate shooting times. I talked to a couple of club members who were at the club today. They said the shooters were a grown man and his kid. They also had no problem with me walking to the top of the hill to inspect the site. I walked up the hill, went to the shooting tables outside of the shooting shed, where no activity is allowed. The shooting shed was clear of casings, but there were some number, a couple, three dozen, of newly fired twenty-two casings at one of the benches. There were many various casings of different calibers on the ground also, but none were new shiny brass like the twenty-two casings. There were targets in the large open range at what I believe to be one hundred, two hundred, and three hundred yards. All had significant earthen berms behind them. It is over a year since I was last at the range, but it appears to me that there is a new narrow range, separate from the broad general range. It heads in a northeast direction generally. The range is about twenty-plus yards wide, with numerous markers, targets ranging out several hundred yards. There were five markers that I counted, and the total distance to be furthest might be five hundred yards. There were no discern, distinguishable berms in the back of the markers, though the slope was uphill, and would have naturally provided some backdrop. In reviewing Google Earth, this range is clearly visible in the twenty-eighteen shots, but nowhere to be seen in any of the earlier shots, including twenty-seventeen."
And I would ask what the zoning enforcement officer intend to do about it, if he provides this as a change of use.
So I'm understanding correctly, he said they created a new range?
Looks like they created a new five hundred yard range.
Would they have needed to pull a permit for that?
Well, it all depends if it's considered a substantial change to the property, and they would have to go onto the planning board under six point two, I think it is.
The site plan, yeah.
Okay, and if they didn't, then, by right, the building inspector should, not building, zoning enforcement officer, should consider whether the construction of said range is considered a substantial change to the property that would have required a site plan approval slash special permit from the planning board.
What would be considered substantial change?
That I don't know.
Okay.
I, I can't answer that question.
That's okay.
Number one, I'm not the zoning enforcement officer, however, I did forward this email to Mr. Coyle, and I'm planning on having a conversation with him regarding it.
Can we also get a more detailed report from the police department as for the time when they log, when they went out, and all that stuff?
Well, it must be in his log, must be in there...
It doesn't say what day, what time, or that, it just says, there's reported shots from...
Right, the log will have it.
The log will have it, but...
Yeah, look at the log, it'll give you the time that they went out.
I think it was thirteen something.
I didn't see the log when I read the...
You don't get that, it...
Oh, I don't get it, that's why I didn't read it.
No, look, look at it here, the log should be attached to it, here, in the departmental reports.
Yeah, we don't get the good stuff.
No.
Cause the issue that I run into is, I can't turn around and tell the building inspector, "You need to do this, you need to do that," okay, because he'll very quickly say, "Well, the town administrator told me to do this," or, "The board of selectmen told me to do that," when we have no right to do that, that's our problem. But the concern I have is, if there's additional activity going on up there, why aren't the abutters putting in complaints for the building inspector to have to respond to?
Because they're not feeling they're being taken seriously.
They don't know what...
But, they were told, "Keep filing, and if you don't like the decision, you can appeal it to the zoning board of appeals."
No, I, I understand that.
But if they don't wanna follow the procedure...
They're just not feeling heard.
Well, like I said, you put it in, you don't like his decision, you go to the zoning board of appeals, you don't like their decision, you go to land court, just like the Grammy Bow and Gun Club did against us. It's the same idea.
And they used the police logs against the residents complaining, cause the police log said there was never a problem.
What do you mean, "use against residents"?
The Bow and Gun Club used the information from the police logs that they went, every time they went and inspected, they never found an issue at the Bow and Gun Club. That's what I'm saying.
But the issue is, Jay, even though they said that, you go to a court, and a judge reviews it, and a judge can call the police department in to have them explain it further.
I'm not...
No, all I'm saying is, you know, everybody makes this general statement that, "Oh, well we can't do it because of this, we can't do it because of that," that's incorrect.
That's where it is, right there.
You know, the problem becomes, is the town isn't responsible for paying all the costs to, to keep investigating this, you know, that's the problem. You know, we're not gonna, it's not our responsibility to go out and see if they done this, and they've done that, and they violated this, put a complaint in, and then we go down that road.
Well, and that's been said several times in the past meetings we've had here, I've stated it several times, so...
We stated the same thing when they said about employee complaints, it's not in writing, it doesn't exist, we need the complaint, we gotta follow the law.
So, it's like a quarter to?
That's something to look at, I mean, so, I mean, the code enforcement officer's gotta decide what he wants to do as far as he's noticing a change of use, I mean, to the point, is it...
Does he consider it a substantial change which is in violation of six point two?
I'd like to know what the interpretation is of the change.
I'm trying to think if...
That's based upon everybody, whoever's in that position, that's their opinion.
That's why I'd like to know what his is.
Yeah.
Just so we understand.
Well, do we wanna have an executive session and have the building inspector there to tell us what his position is?
No, you can call him in and have him give it to you, on camera.
Well, I didn't know if it would jeopardize the lawsuit, that's...
No, cause this is, this will be a new complaint, this, you're talking about that new five hundred yard range.
Okay.
We're not talking the other range.
It's not even a complaint, that is, it says an email from the code enforcement officer telling us he's recognized something different up there.
But there is a complaint filed with the police department.
Not about that.
Not about the range, about gunshots ricocheting.
Right.
Up on the abutters property.
The, the issue is, the police department received a call about a gentleman, a budding property, and he was hearing bullets whizzing past his head, okay, and the police come and investigate, they went and investigated, they gave the report, that's all they did. When I saw it, when we saw that report, we brought it to the zoning enforcement officer and asked him to please look in to the incident that occurred. He went to the site, and this is what he found, that's all he's doing, was following up on the police report. I didn't ask him to, whether to make a determination or any of that other stuff, I can, but I wanna wait until I talk with special counsel.
I know, I wanted, I wanna know what special counsel has to say, exactly, to make sure it's the same interpretation the building or zoning enforcement officer has, that's why I wanna go to meetings.
But, again, even special counsel cannot tell the zoning enforcement officer what he has to do or not do, that is only the purview of the zoning enforcement officer.
It's what he interprets.
It's his interpretation and no other.
Because he is the one who has to justify it in court, he is the one who has to justify it in front of the zoning board of appeals, it's him and him alone. You could think it's, it is, Jay, he could sit there and say, "No, I don't think so." Due to, due to the, the number of acreages there, I don't consider it a substantial change to the property. He could say that.
He could say anything.
He could say, you're right. You know, he mentioned the thing about the slope is uphill behind it, so that would make a natural barrier, you would disagree with that possibly.
Depends on the most velocity of the weapon, I'm just saying...
But Jay, I'm saying, you could possibly disagree with that. I didn't say, I didn't talk about most of, I said, you could possibly, as another person, that's all. Same here, same with Glenn, same with, you know, Jen, everybody, so...
Well, how are we gonna get this resolved? We've got, we've got this petition, the people wanna know, what is the interpretation of the cease and desist order? Should we call the building inspector in and have him give us his interpretation of the cease and desist order, and how he's gonna enforce it?
That's what the board wants, that's what you can do.
I'd like to at least talk to him about what his interpretation of substantial change is.
Could be the same conversation.
It could be.
What do you think, what...
I don't have an issue asking about what his interpretation of this here is, but the other part is, is what the special counsel is revealing now.
I, I agree with you.
So that's something that, as we spoke earlier, that Chris will follow up with the, the special counsel and get the answers that Mr. Shu has...
Been asking for.
Yeah, they've been sent to the attorney, so we're just gonna ask the attorney, instead of trying to set up a meeting, just answer them, and we'll forward those answers back to Mr. Shu, but again, I don't think it can be a, you know, question and answer type thing, keep on going back and forth, back and forth, there's gotta be a certain point where it just stops.
Right, the way I look at it, there's two interpretations, we should hear the interpretation of the cease and desist order of the zoning enforcement officer, we should hear the interpretation of the cease and desist of special counsel, and see if they're the same or not.
It doesn't matter if they're the same or not, it's what, it's what the code enforcement officer believes to be.
Right, so special counsel doesn't matter?
Well, it depends if we determine that he's not doing his job.
Special counsel, or zoning enforcement?
No, zoning enforcement officer.
Again, that's, that's based on interpretation.
Different subjects.
It's based on, there's, there's a, there's a process to follow, so, he has sole authority to make his decision. If someone doesn't agree with that decision, there's steps to follow, they can appeal it to the zoning board of appeals, if they don't agree with that, as Chris stated earlier, they can go to land court. That's, that's the way the process works, I mean...
Nobody's disagreeing with you, I'm saying, we are cognizant of it.
But the appearance is, Jay, and I'm gonna say this, this is my own personal opinion, the appearance is, they don't like the answers they get, and all they do is keep coming back and complaining, and complaining, and complaining, they're not following the proper procedure, period.
Right, and they're really not complaining.
And this board, and this board has no say in the process, unless you're gonna fire every building inspector until you find someone who agrees with what that group wants, okay? And this board can't do that, cause then it's gonna look like you're putting them under duress.
No.
There you go. He has to be a priority in the decisions. There's a process to follow if somebody doesn't agree with it, so...
But we can still get his opinion?
Yes, you can.
And his interpretation, which would be helpful to all parties involved.
Yeah, we should, the way I look at it now, if we're gonna get a written interpretation of the cease and desist order from the special counsel, we should get a written decision from the building or zoning enforcement officer, what his interpretation of the cease and desist order is as well. Because his is the one that really counts.
His is the one that counts.
That counts. So I think we go with that one. And I can compare one to another, and if they don't match, well, no. He is the code enforcement officer. He is granted the authority by the state. So that's his job.
So we have two options. We can either have him here on camera to give us his interpretation, or we can ask for it in written form.
I'm open to either way. The only advantage of having him on camera is we can ask questions.
That is correct. Questions may not give us answers you want.
No, but they'd be his interpretation. Yeah.
Okay.
Of what he's looking at.
But it can't look like an inquisition.
I'm not asking, I'm just...
See, I'm okay with him giving us a written statement of what his... His understanding of that is, and that's it. Because he can say one thing, and we start asking questions. It's almost like we don't, because we don't agree with him, we're gonna start asking questions. What he says is what he says. And that, to me, can just come in a statement written out to us. This is his, what he sees, this is what he feels, and...
I'd be comfortable with a written if we have the opportunity to make notations for further clarification. Not, I don't agree, but just could you clarify?
If somebody's here, if you don't understand what it says, like emails sometimes, you don't hear the language with it, that's all I'm trying to say.
No, I understand. I like personally speaking with people because you can read them and you can, and tone does get lost in email. However, we don't want it to come across that we are...
There's no inquisition. We just wanted to find out what's going on and do it right. That's all.
Well, I would recommend that we have him give us a statement. Rereview the statement. If there's something we don't understand, do we ask questions based off what we don't understand?
What we don't understand.
I think that's fair. And that's it. We're just asking questions on something we don't understand about what his interpretation is.
But then we'll still follow up with special counsel as far as his interpretation. Excuse me. Do you want that as a directive, Mr. Martin?
I'm gonna put it in writing to Mr. Briggs.
You're gonna put it in writing to Mr. Briggs? Okay?
Can we put a deadline of two weeks so we can have it for the next meeting?
I'd like to have it resolved.
Preferably, I'd like to have it by the next meeting, so we can just get it done.
Well, just send them an email or send them a letter, actually ask them for it.
I wanna write a correspondence.
Yeah, with correspondence, with a date that we would like a response by.
And then if he can't make that date, let him reply that he can't make that date and what day he can make it by. Are you with that?
Fair enough. I just don't want to get into negotiating.
I don't either.
Tim tables here.
No, I think it's no negotiation. I think we give him a...
Yeah.
A date that he needs to respond by.
I think that's appropriate.
As Jay said, for some reason, he can't make that date. There's a reason why, and an alternate date, and that's the end of the...
With him.
I'm agreeing with that. You got all that?
Yeah, he's got it all. Anything else in correspondence anybody wants to discuss? What was that?
Nothing.
You what?
I don't have anything correspondence, no.
Okay. Motion to move correspondence. Like we do department reports? Why, you just wanna leave it like that and we'll move on?
Just leave it.
Leave it? Okay. And we'll go into the department reports.
Have you had a chance to look at them, Glenn?
I did. Yep.
All right, then I will make a motion to accept the departmental reports.
I'll second Jen's motion.
Any more discussion on the department reports? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes for unanimous for department reports. Then we're gonna go into the maintenance warrants. Okay. Go Mark and Dean. Go Dean first.
Okay, we have three warrants. First one is warrant number 23. That is a bill-paying warrant in the amount of $370,048.81. Then we have warrant number 24, which is a payroll warrant in the amount of $421,096.28. And then we have warrant number 25, which is a month-end warrant to pay our insurance bills and payout retirement contributions and so on and so forth in the amount of $157,972.85.
That email the school sent out about some bill being paid late, that's all been taken care of, hasn't it?
What bill?
I don't know. It was something about insurances or something like...
Are you talking about the Medicaid billing?
Could have been. I don't remember. But since the last meeting, they sent out some, an email.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if it's all paid. That's all. I'd have to look it up and see exactly which one.
Hold on. I have it in my email.
I know they sent it to all of us. That's why I...
What bill?
Uh, hold on. Give me a second to get into it. Outstanding fiscal year 19 Medicaid administrative claims.
And when Mr. Turcini asked me about it, it was on a Friday. I took the weekend, put all the numbers together, and put it out on Monday.
Okay, so yeah, because we received the email on October 10th. So it was a Thursday that we received the email.
So it's all taken care of. That's what I'm hearing, right?
It's been submitted.
Okay.
Chris just said, that's what I'm saying.
It's all taken care of.
But can we go back to the warrants on hand?
Mm-hmm.
Glenn, have you had a chance to look at them?
I did.
You did? Or do you want to go?
I know Chris has said what's being paid out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I already read them.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I got them right here. But I didn't know if that payment was included particularly...
It's not a payment.
Oh.
It's not a payment. It's information so they can bill for Medicaid services.
Then I misunderstood it.
It's not an actual bill.
Because the way that I read it was, and I was saying I read everything correctly. Outstanding FY '19 Medicaid administrative claims.
Is all the chapter 90 money coming to the state?
We finally got above $50,000, so we have to put a request in now. Because what's happened is, is chapter 90, they don't like you putting in any reimbursement request less than $50,000. We were at $10,000 for, since last May. Now he's actually done some work. He's done some crack sealing. He's done paving, bachelor alignment. So now we're up around $200,000 or so, so now I can...
Okay.
Put the reimbursement request in. Actually, I was putting all that stuff together today, to be honest with you.
It's nice seeing the school lunch program so minimal, the amount.
There's a concern with that, but I'll let the auditors deal with that.
There's always a concern with that.
Well, do you want me to get into it?
No.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry.
Nope.
The people should know.
The issue is this, is at the end of June of 2019, the school had made a claim that they operated at a profit. Cash was at a negative. They didn't run at a profit. They had a loss. I, we, we had, I had them at about, I think it was like $2,000 loss. They're still claiming they're operating at a profit, but they haven't paid any chart web bills yet for this year. We just got the first one in at $40,000. They're gonna be in the hole again. Okay? But I want the auditor to deal with that and not me because the opinion of the school is, is they're running at a surplus, not a deficit. And that's not what the books are showing. So...
So the school lunch program, that's okay.
Yes.
It's information the people need to know as well we need to know.
I'm all set.
All right, well, I will make a motion to approve fiscal year 20 warrants, number 23, 24, and 25.
Any more discussion on the fiscal year maintenance warrants? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously for three ayes. Christmas tree lighting. That was cold.
We're having a fun the annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony, which is usually the first Sunday after Thanksgiving, which is December 1st of 2019.
December 1st?
Yep. It usually starts at 6:30, right Kathy?
Yeah.
Lighting is at 6:30.
Safety complex.
In front of the safety complex. So we're gonna start getting this up and running, and we usually like to try and get the select board to go.
I go over here.
There's been, there's been times when some select board members don't show.
It's Christmas trees. They're pretty. Christmas lights make everybody happy.
Plus, we, you know, we'll have Santa over at the church. Santa comes on the fire engine, so...
There is one thing I'm gonna recommend. Remember last year?
What?
Oh, the cookies.
What about?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna take a different avenue for the cookies this year.
Okay. You tell me.
I will. It's closer. There were some complaints last year from the cookies.
Regarding what?
Just that they weren't really, you know, like, I guess more the traditional, like, sugar cookies and stuff.
They weren't homemade, I will say that. Yes.
I think we can do a better job. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah, I'd be glad to take it out.
Okay. I won't argue.
Are you gonna bake?
No, you guys can bake over at the jail, right?
The jail does bake cookies and many other things as well.
Yeah.
There it is. The paperclip is all there on the table.
I just didn't want to get things all screwed up on you.
They do it for a lot of communities?
They do it for a lot of different events, a lot of different things, yeah.
Can you get any kind of menu or anything with what they do, or they just do it based on what they ask?
They do sugar cookies.
Yeah.
Period.
They do different kinds of cookies and stuff like that.
Can they do frosted sugar cookies?
We'll cross that bridge when it comes.
It'll be here before we know it.
Yeah, it's almost Halloween, so... Christmas is starting on the Hallmark Channel, so that's when you know.
Christmas has been on the Hallmark Channel.
Yeah, but it's gonna start...
I don't think it stops. It just goes on.
It does.
No, it stopped for August. August is a little bit of September, so...
The first one, new one, is not till 4 November.
No, October 26th is when it officially starts.
Oh, my wife told me 4 November.
The fact that you both know this is a problem.
No, my wife told me it's 4 November.
I have my DVR set for all of them, but...
There's nothing else good on TV, so you're up there watching the Hallmark Channel.
My wife has me tape everything on the Hallmark.
I don't know about you guys. But somebody did tell me, and I haven't checked it yet, but there's only nine Mondays left until Christmas. I'm not ready.
I believe that.
Nine Mondays?
Nine Mondays.
Nine weeks?
Nine weeks, I believe that.
Two weeks, two months on a day?
That's not funny.
No, it's gonna be here before you know it.
I'm still trying to figure out where the rest of the year went, but that's okay.
I just wanna go back to summer.
So...
Okay.
So roughly, there's 20 Mondays till spring, is what you're telling me?
Well, pretty soon you'll be changing the clock, so...
Don't say that.
Next weekend?
Well, you gain an hour of sleep.
This weekend.
Yeah, but it gets dark so early.
Hell, I'm up, I'm up when it's dark.
It's not this weekend, the fall weekend, right?
It's after Thanksgiving.
It's the first, yeah, first Sunday in November, yeah.
Yeah, because I got ski patrol this weekend. It's always the weekend after.
Halloween party that Saturday, so...
It's that time of year. Next item is the FY 2021 budget. I just want everybody to know, I'm starting the process. Personnel board is meeting on October 30th to set the pay scale for the FY 21 budget. And I will be handing out all the forms to the department heads, and hopefully they'll be in by the end of December. And the board is gonna have to make a schedule when they're gonna meet with the department heads underneath them to go over their proposed budgets. You know, in the past, what we've done, we've met at 5:30 instead of, you know, 6:30. And we try and do like 2 or 3 a night, so...
It seems like we just did this, too.
Yes. Yes, that's what I'm saying. It's, I don't know where the year went to.
And personally, I am in favor of the school having their budgets, net school spending, and everything else is an article just like every other department in this town.
Net school spending or minimum contribution?
Net school spending. That's what the state says they're supposed to have. I do. I do minimum spending. I know they want the 305 included in there.
Okay.
You have to, the override.
No.
No, we don't. That was a one-year override.
Was it?
Yes.
Proposition two and a half override is only dedicated to the item it is voted for for the first year.
That's correct.
I was not aware of that.
After that, it becomes free money.
Oh.
Okay. However, the finance committee promised that the school would have it for 10 years. That expired five years ago.
Yep.
Okay? If you want, I'll send you to proposition two and a half primer. That explains all that.
That's why I'm saying they should do net school spending because they've been getting increases and then just do everything else.
I did not realize that.
Okay, I'll send you the primer.
Once it was done, it was done until it was...
No.
I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Do you want it to, or not?
No, I think last year was a good budget here for schools. I think things came, wasn't, no one was looking for extra money and stuff like that, so... I mean, that's something we'll discuss down the road, but I don't think we need to start worrying about it right now.
No, I think we need to...
Well, I think you should so that they know when they're preparing their budget.
On how to prepare it.
On how to prepare it, if they're gonna get the 305 automatically, or is it gonna be jumped through hoops to get it?
Again, I think they're...
Not to be made tonight, if you don't want to. Think about it, but...
I don't have a problem with them having that 305,000.
I don't either.
At one point, that's what the town people voted for, for them to have it. I think eventually if they decide they shouldn't have it, that's something...
Well, I think they should have given the money back or the surplus and let the taxpayer decide what they want to do with it, too. They shouldn't just take it upon themselves and just spend it for the sake of spending it.
And again, I think if, and that, against that, what you're saying, Jay, but I think if there's enough people that felt that way, then that concern should have been brought up at the town meeting.
There's no article to address it yet. How can the people bring it up at a special town meeting if there's no article for it?
From what I understand, Glenn, from what, people are upset this time around because of the moving of classes and that.
Potential.
Moving of classes, whatever. Okay? Number one, we can't build in that building at this point in time. You cannot add classrooms because that project has not been closed out by MSBA. We cannot do anything to that building at this point in time.
It still hasn't closed.
Has not been closed yet. That project is still an open project. Okay? That project is still an open project, okay? So when people are out there saying, well, we're just going to add to it, you can't do that at this point in time.
We have to wait.
Okay? Number two is, and the school is notorious for doing this. They come to town meeting, they say, we're going to do this much in personal expenses, this much in expenses, this much in capital. Get it voted at town meeting, and then the next meeting they go to, they start moving money around inside their budget to purchase things that they didn't bring forward to town meeting, or that they presented to town meeting that they no longer are going to pay because they want to do something else with the money. That's, that's what I'm hearing from the street right now. That's the problem a lot of people are having.
And I'm not disputing that one thing, Chris, is all I'm saying, is that those people and everybody else shows up to the town meeting and by voting for what you feel...
And I agree, and I agree. But at some point, the school is going to contact me and say, what do we get? What, what is the target that we go for, for our budget? Is it with the 305 or without the 305?
And again, I...
Because last year I said, include the 305.
And I have no problem myself saying we include the 305. I would, you know, and it's something we can ask the Finance Committee as well. I mean, it's something they agree about. Something that's been going there.
But the 10-year, the 10-year promise died five years ago.
I understand that, but, you know, I, I look at, you know, departments, I have a lot of things, and when we have a problem where we have people wanting to come, I don't say a problem, but people want to go to schools in Granby, people are moving into town for the schools. I just look at that as, that's, that's a good problem to have.
It's a positive problem to have.
Right, and we'll work our ways...
If they were residents, I'd agree with you. As if they were all residents moving into the school, I'd agree with you.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, that's any town. That's any city, any town, that's, that's all part of the whole, whole thing. But I know when I moved here 20 some odd years ago, one thing I looked at was the schools and stuff like that. And I think it's what people base a lot of this decision on, that, that I'm moving into town, or some of the people, not all of them, but, so, you know.
Oh, yeah, just like at the school public forums, they had people voicing their opinion that I would not have voted for this school if my child could not attend it. There was a lot of voices to that.
I'm aware.
Okay, you're aware of that, too, then?
I'm on Facebook.
Well, it's not just Facebook, it's, you can't even go to the early mug and have lunch with out here in the...
Well, that's all I can tell you.
So you go to Happy Days?
I've learned, too, that Facebook and some of your communication happens at different areas, different locations throughout the town. Isn't always factual.
Agreed.
More opinions, people's opinions, and what they believe to be factual.
And that proves the point, what Chris just said, about people going around saying, we're going to add to the school, we're going to build some more rooms and stuff, you can't. Because it doesn't belong to the town yet. I'm just saying, that's what people are saying.
When do we have to sign off on that building by?
It's up to MSBA.
It is currently going through the final closeout process. And that can take up to a year. That's what the facts are. Sorry.
No, facts are facts, no reason to apologize for them.
People get upset when I say you can't do it.
Well, I think people don't understand. I mean, I look at a house being built. Once the house is built and I have the mortgage, I'm paying on it, then I can do what I want to it. That would be a logical way of thinking. So in people's minds, we already voted for it, we're already paying for it, why can't we?
Because, and the issue is, is MSBA fully goes through all the invoices, makes sure that everything that they're paying for is legitimate and not something over and above. They've only paid us 95% of the maximum contribution from that at this point in time. We could get up to another 5%, which could possibly be another 100,000 dollars.
It's going to. We gave you the money, we want to make sure you spent the money.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
It's fair enough.
And it takes them a year to do that.
It's just that the green community, they come around and they expect everything after they do it. Well, really, it's everything. Because a lot of people don't understand that we have to ask money for grants that we get. Because the state does not pay until the tasks of the grants are completed.
It's upfront, you get reimbursed.
Yeah, you got to pay for it upfront, then you get reimbursed.
I think it's more a matter of education than it is anything else. It's a matter of not understanding, not knowing. And let's face it, municipal government runs a heck of a lot different than a household.
Can't make decisions.
See, we are special in more ways than more than...
We're special. I will say that, we are special. Because we run differently than the private industry, too. All right. Next thing is to assign the special town meeting articles to who's going to present.
The only thing I want to say on the special town meeting articles, I did meet with the special town council overall.
No.
In our bylaws.
You didn't meet with special town council.
No, I met with town council.
Town council, not special town council.
Town council. He's got a concern, just like the Bow and Gun Club, that the schedule does not meet what the word says. They conflict, they're not together. And by law, order of precedent, whatever is written in, I'm going to call it Longham or whatever's typed, overrules what's in the schedule. Because they should point to each other.
They should be the same.
That's right. That's all, that's all I'm saying. And they are not the same. So we're going to have to amend some of the ones there. And it is what it is. That's, I mean, what, and I don't know if you want to go through them one by one or wait till special town meeting nights, up to you, but they, the... Not counting the ones that we're going to address, there's a whole bunch of other ones there. He, and a recommendation he makes, the next time a grant comes out, if there's money available to update the town's bylaws, that we focus the money there and try and get the table to meet the type version, or vice versa, whatever the town wants to do. So I don't know when we're getting the D L T A grants, which should be coming out soon. If one of them comes out, then we should probably throw it there to get it squared away. And I'm talking general bylaws, zoning bylaws, everything across the board. The master plan. We need to get them, because we got banged with the Bow and Gun Club, and we can't afford the two attorneys that we got working on them now. We don't need to get hit. Because attorneys love when one side says one and one says the other. Because that's money in their pocket.
According to the attorney's, the written part is what...
Yes.
Supersedes the, the chart.
Exactly, you're 100% correct.
So that's, I mean, again, it's a chart, it, it should be the same as what is written. But if it's not, what is written supersedes what the chart is, so...
You are 100% correct. And unfortunately, we have a lot of it that is not the same. I'm not pointing this bill, I'll blame on anybody particular. It's general bylaws, zoning bylaws, and who knows all of what kind of bylaws we got.
These are the things that happen when you have...
Volunteers and...
Volunteers, part-time boards and stuff like that.
Yep.
Hopefully a lot of that stuff, when we have an actual planner that can be designated to look at some of the stuff, that's what he or she can do.
You have any idea when we'll go for the actual planner, Chris, yet?
No, I have a couple of job descriptions that I need to meld together.
Do we need to put the old library into shape first?
No, not yet.
Okay, I'm just asking, because I mean, I don't know, like you tell me at times, if you hired somebody, where you're going to put them? And I don't know if we have any money currently allocated to refurbish the downstairs of the old library, where they most likely would go. Unless you're going to put a petition here, make office space. Got to do, you got to put them somewhere.
Yeah, I know.
I was going to say something, but I am not going to start a Facebook conversation.
Oh, I'm not trying to, I'm just saying, we got to put them somewhere. And myself, I like to get them on board as soon as possible because I can see that Kathy and Chris can use some help because we need to address a lot of things.
We are in the process of trying to hire the part-time clerical for our office.
Right.
That, to me, is the more important part, to get rid of some of the workload. The planner is coming in after that.
That's it. Because I know you were trying to get one that was on a grant, but then that fell through, so... I know you've been working at it, but it seemed...
And we've had one other person apply, and we're planning on interviewing that individual sometime this week. All right, well, I figure the planning board is going to be presenting articles 1 through 4.
I think it's 1 through 5, I think.
4?
The 4, I thought it was 5. Looking for my sheet.
4 is, does the water line, is it taken out?
Yeah.
Oh, you're right, this is my old copy, sorry, they got reversed. I printed out the old copy.
You can take that.
You need it.
To answer your question, yes, the planning board will be presenting.
Okay, any idea who from the planning board will be making the...
Yes, yes, you.
You, okay. So Glenn is 1 through 4, whether he likes it or not. Article 5 is the water main.
I guess I'll have that one.
6 is the pavement repairs at the library.
Pavement repairs, yeah.
Dave or...
Dave DeRosa might be the best in that he can explain why it's happening.
Who you want to present, I can ask him.
Yeah, you can ask Dave. If not, I can present him, and Dave will like to come up and explain it a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll put Dave slash Glenn.
Then 7 is...
7 I want Dave DeRosa to do because it has to do with the trees along our public ways. Number 8, I want to see if Lou Barry will do that for the Parks Oversight Committee.
For the EV chargers, or...
Oh, EV, oh, that's EV charger one.
No, Dave is the EV chargers, yep.
Do you want to do that one, Jay?
Yeah, it's easy enough to do.
The 9 is the Parks Oversight. Lou Barry to do that one, and to do number 10.
Okay.
That has to do with Dufrane Park and the, to try and get a consultant to come in to get us a true number of what's it going to cost to dredge the pond, and then what other repair work that is necessary out there.
And then 10 is the sander.
10 is the sander, and, I don't know, just one of the board members, and I can write a blurb on it, basically.
Or do you want to have Jeremy come up for his first time? Or give him a break this time?
I want to give him a bye this time.
That's fine, I'm waiting for our annual town meeting, I'm just saying, you know.
So which board member would like to present?
Need additional sander because we all have shared services anymore.
And besides, we have a vehicle that doesn't have a sander.
We now have two vehicles I can handle.
That can handle sanders, so we'll have one on each. I can take it, I haven't done anything.
You want to do that? Okay. All right.
Might as well pull my weight.
Okay, I got to get the primer to you. Okay.
Yeah, I believe that finishes us off.
Just make sure you write me up my cheat sheet.
Hey Glenn, we got 5 minutes.
You want your blurb?
My little blurb.
I'm doing blurb, no problem.
Really, you got 20, they don't start at 15, right?
No problem, right?
Okay, I don't see anything else on the schedule. Anybody want to talk about anything else?
I just have one thing to talk about.
That's fine.
I just, I want, and I know we know, but sometimes I think, I think Chris, Chris gets, he has a full-time job. Maybe a couple of full-time jobs at that.
Job and a half.
Right. So, and I know he gets a lot of direction from the select board. And I want to make sure that he gets the direction from the select board as one. The select board is Chris's supervisor, not any of us individually directly. So I want to make sure that we understand as a, as a board, the workload that Chris is doing. And that we know that if something's asked of him, that the board's aware of it's being asked. Then we, you know, we sometimes, we, you know, we see things, we ask Chris to take care of it, but we got to remember that it's us as a complete board to make sure that he's not getting overwhelmed and, you know. Well, I'm not just saying more, I think we need to make sure that we're doing our part and that we're not, granted, as a board, we are giving Chris direction where to go, not as individuals, so, that's all.
One question for the board members. Do you want me to start negotiating new contracts with the department heads, or does the department liaison want to be part of that process with me?
I think the, I think the department liaison should be part of it.
I think so, too.
Okay.
The only thing I'll ask you is, I've already started with the fire department, you want to do it together, or are you going to finish it, or how do you want to...
No, these are department head contracts.
Oh, oh, I didn't know. Fire units, okay.
We haven't gotten any dates back from the bargaining unit yet.
And I don't think we're going to. They're going to run on their contract as is.
And they're not going to get a pay increase.
They got plenty of overtime.
It's that simple, so... All right, so if you can give me some dates, you're available, Jen, because you're police, right?
I am police.
Because we have lieutenant and police chief.
I'm available whenever.
Okay. Any time in particular better than the other?
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
I'm flexible.
Now, how are we going to work that out? Do you and Jen meet with the police?
We develop a proposed contract, and then we come back to the board in executive session.
Okay.
We present it.
Okay.
We invite the employee also to come in. Then if the board has no problem, we come out of executive session and ratify the contract.
Just want to make sure we don't undeclare the procedure, that's all.
Okay. And Glenn, you're usually available late afternoon, right?
Yes. Anytime after 5 o'clock, now.
Okay.
That's evening.
They used to be late afternoon, now it's changed to evening.
It's okay.
Early evening.
Early evening, that works.
The only other question I have, Glenn, is planning board on November 4th has some hearings. Do you want to change the selectmen's meeting from that day to another day?
No, we, we scheduled the meeting, the hearings, wanted to start at 5, so that I would be able to listen and vote, if they'd be voting, because at this point, one of the members, it will, will not be able to vote, or one of the other members will not actually be there.
Because I thought there was something going on at 6, so...
There is another one at 6, but the, the other three members will be able to, if the vote is taken that night, the other three members can...
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it doesn't require a super vote, then?
I must have read that wrong, then.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you don't feel...
The second one requires a super majority.
Okay. I just don't want you to feel that pressured. It's easier for us to move our meeting to another night, then, I just want to put that out there.
I mean, unless we want, I mean, I could ask, if we wanted to start at 7 o'clock, instead of, you know, complicating someone's schedules going to a different night that way, I think it would be an hour, maybe enough time to, for someone to speak, so...
Does this board have a problem moving it to 7 p.m. that one night?
No.
Yes, I mean, if anything, that can always be, if, it just, it just comes down to the board.
I'll just bring my jammies so I can sleep here overnight.
If the board wishes to, you know, continue it, then we can continue it.
Okay, so we'll make it 7 o'clock on November 4th. Okay.
So next meeting, 7 p, well, 7 p.m., 11:04.
Okay, I just wanted to check with you, that's all.
I appreciate it. Anything else, I'm not here, feel free to start without me.
We don't, we don't have a choice, we're always emphasizing 7 o'clock, we'll start.
No, Jay.
I don't, uh, anything else, anybody else? Do we want to join? I haven't heard anything.
No, I'd like to stay here all night.
Oh, okay, then we have to, and then somebody makes motions.
Well, in that case, I'm going to make a motion to the chairman.
I'll second Glenn's motion.
Any more discussion on the chairman? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.